Good evening, please bear with us as we end our closed session. May I have a motion to return to open session and approve certificate number fourteen dash fifteen dash nine for the closed session?
Move to accept.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Green, seconded by Mrs. Ream. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Erin Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Mrs. Miller Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have approval of agenda.
Move to accept the agenda?
Second. Moved by Mrs. Green, seconded by Mr. Bailey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Meeting minutes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 2nd, 2015 regular school board meeting?
Move to accept the minutes.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Green, seconded by Mrs. Miller Richards. Are there any changes or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now we come to our favorite part of the meeting, our recognitions. We will start with the word of the month perseverance to be presented by Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Mr. Terry.
Good evening, Madam Chair Holmes, school board members, Dr. Melton, and all of our families, friends, and guests tonight. Gives me great honor to present Mrs. Clantina Hankerson, who is our wonderful music teacher at Lafayette, and she is bringing with us tonight seven of our performing arts students. Our fifth graders are Camden Erby, Solisa Samora Dixon, and Shamaya Williams, and our fourth graders are Scarlett Allen, Cameron Cox, Zachary Horn, and Tanner Rimmel. We welcome them up for the character education word of the month.
What does perseverance mean? I can only say it. Perseverance is an after quality of perseverance. I still don't understand it. Maybe I can help. Perseverance comes from the verb persevere, which means to continue steadily in a course of action or purpose. Despite of difficulties or obstacles. Persist. Can you give me a sentence or an example? Here is a sentence. Despite the failure of his early spirit, the scientists displayed perseverance in his research. He kept on. Here. Let's say it was generally not, but you keep trying and asking your teachers questions. You'll be explaining perseverance. I think I get it now. Do you? Yes, I got it. This reminds me of when I tried out for the field hockey team. I didn't think I was going to make it, but I kept trying and trying. Was I showing perseverance? That's right. No matter what, keep trying to reach your goals. Perseverance.
Chairperson Holmes, board members, Dr. Melton, friends and families. It is my pleasure to introduce the winners of our Black History Art and Essay Contest, which we do every year during Black History Month. And I will begin with our kindergarten. Our first place winner in kindergarten is Preston Pomroy. He is the son of Mrs. Kathleen Pomroy and Mr. Marcus Pomroy. His teacher is Miss Peyton. Congratulations. Great job Preston. His winning entry was entitled Rosa Parks, and it was a wonderfully done poster with some subtitles. He did a wonderful job. Now I'll introduce our first place winner in first grade. That is Amelia Carter. Amelia is the daughter of Ms. Jennifer Eglespin and Mr. Chelias Carter. She is in Ms. Trebly's class. Amelia? She's coming right up. Amelia's winning entry was about Ida B. Wells art piece and Vanessa. She did a fantastic job. Congratulations. And our first place winner in second grade is Stella Hensley. Stella is the daughter of Mrs. Sarah White and Mr. Joseph Hensley. She is in Ms. Goldberg's second grade class. Stella's winning entry was Rory. It was an essay, and she did a wonderful job. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Matt Terry, principal of Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Thank you.
Good evening, once again. Great job performing arts students. The winners of our Black History Month Essay Contest at Lafayette in third grade, we'll mention first, is Gabriel Mellinger. He is the son of Keith and Sarah Mellinger. Please come on up. In fourth grade, we have Aurelia Weirs, the daughter of Mr. Michael Weirs, and Ms. Janet Matahitz. Please come on up Aurelia. And in fifth grade, Lily Watkins was our winner, and that's the daughter of Stephen and Janet Watkins. Our fifth graders participated in the Virginia Black History Month Association Children's Writing Contest. It's the first time we've done this, at least in my time there. And we were honored to have a winner in fifth grade. The woman, the child's name is Charlotte Sneed, and Charlotte got third place state overall. And she is the daughter of George and Kristen Sneed. And actually, they could not be here this evening. She sends her regrets, but she did attend the gala this weekend, and we were really proud of her. She got third place. So congratulations to Charlotte. Next, I'd like to bring up Mrs. Sue Caver from Lafayette.
Holmes, Dr. Melton, school board members, and guests. I have the privilege of recognizing Fredericksburg fine scholars this evening from both Lafayette and Walker Grant. We'll begin with grade level winners. In third grade, we have Bianca Hernandez Alvarez as our champion. She's the daughter of Ms. Laura Alvarez. Our runner-up in third grade is Isaac Batista, son of Daniel and Eve Batista. In fourth grade, our champion is Jason Stinchcomb. He's the son of Matthew and Holly Stinchcomb. Our fourth grade runner-up is David Alms. He's the son of David and Karen Alms. Our fifth grade champion is Katie Fiddler. She's the daughter of Robert and Tristan Fiddler. Our fifth grade runner-up is Vittoria Bertini, who is actually withdrawn and is in Italy right now. But she's returning. Our sixth grade champion is Zoe Young. She's the daughter of Ethan Young and Leslie Martin. Our sixth grade runner-up is Benjamin Wolvan. He's the son of Dorian Lewis and Jennifer Wolvan. Our seventh grade champion is Dean Holland. He's the son of Dean and Virginia Holland. Our seventh grade runner-up is William Leonard, son of Rick and Tammy Leonard. Our eighth grade champion is Isabella Martinelli-Gutzman. She's the daughter of David Guzman and Erin Martinelli. In eighth grade, we actually had a time for our runner-up position. Jordan Ritterhoff is, Jordan is the son of Philip, and Amy Ritterhoff. And our other runner-up in eighth grade is Olivia Hackenin. Olivia is the daughter of Keith Hackenin and Anissa Klein. And finally, the Fredericksburg City Public Schools Division B champion is Zoe Young. Zoe will come back up. Zoe again is the daughter of Ethan Young and Leslie Martin. Zoe will go on to compete in the Regional B at James Monroe High School on March 21st at 1:00 P.M. So congratulations Zoe. And I will turn it over to Dr. Wyatt.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure tonight to introduce our all district band members from Walker Grant Middle School. This year, we have two students who are selected to participate. We'll first begin with Emily Kavza, who will be playing oboe for the all district band. Emily is a seventh grader and is the daughter of Mr. Christopher Kavza and Mrs. Jennifer Kavza. Let's please congratulate Emily. Please help me also congratulate Samuel Horn, who will be playing trumpet in the all district band this year. Sam is an eighth grader and is the son of Mr. Paul Horn and Mrs. Holly Horn. Congratulations to those students, and we also like to thank Mr. Ryan Lowry for his work with our band at Walker Grant Middle School and the gig. Congratulations to those students.
Good evening, Chairperson Holmes, Dr. Melton, school board members, guests, and families. We at James Monroe High School are also excited to share that we had a winner finalist in the Virginia Black History Month James Farmer Scholarship. Alexander Williams, son of Andre Williams and Teresa Williams won second place. Please give him a hand. The following students were captains of the 2015 girls and boys swim teams. The teams qualified for the Virginia High School League State Meat Health at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. Megan McCullough, daughter of Dr. Stephen B. McCullough, swam for the team for four years. She has been a team captain for two years. She was a region meat qualifier and made the finals in the butterfly. She also was on the state swim team as a relay alternate. Please give Megan McCullough. Katie Zalgowski, daughter of Mr. Frank Zalgowski and Mrs. Krista Manges Zalgowski, has been on the swim team for three years and served as a junior captain. She was also a region meat qualifier and swam in the finals. Clara Camber, daughter of Mr. Michael Camber and Mrs. Sabina Weitzman, has been on the swim team for three years, and she also served as our junior captain this year. She swam the region meat and made the finals. It's important to note that Katie, Clara, and Megan took off a lot of time at the regional meet and helped the girls' team by placing their top sixteen and earning points. Brad Allison, son of Mr. Greg Allison and Mrs. Christie Allison, is a two-time captain for the swim team and has swam for four years at James Monroe. He is a pre-time state champion in the 200 freestyle, first setting the school record in the 200 freestyle in 2013 and breaking his own school record this year. He is the state 200 freestyle meat record holder, breaking the record that he set last year. He holds school records in the 200 freestyle relay as well as the 400 freestyle relay. This year, his relay team's placed fourth in both relays. He placed fourth in the 100 freestyle this year in states as well. Jory Owen, son of Ms. Jennifer Owen, was a senior captain, and this is the third year he has been on the team. Jory was a state swim qualifier after placing at regionals in the 50 freestyle. He was also a member of the state 200 medley relay team as well as the 200 freestyle relay, which placed fourth in the state. David Howe, son of Mr. Tim Howe and Mrs. Lisa Rumali, was a junior captain this year and has swam for the team three years. This year, he placed top eight at the regional meet in the 50 and the 200 freestyle. He qualified at the state meet to swim the 50 and 100 and was also a swimmer on the 200 medley relay that qualified to swim finals at state.
Thank you for allowing Lafayette to come up one more time. I have our fourth grade Black History Month writing essay contest. We do have our fourth grade winner, and she did arrive. She would not have been late if she was at James Monroe. I just want to note that. But we would like to bring up Aurelia Weirs, son of the daughter of Mr. Michael Weirs and Janet Matahitz. Please come on up Aurelia.
Should do public hearing? I have public hearing next. Is that what I should do? Okay. We will now open the pub, for the public hearing on the 2015-16 school operating budget, the special grants budget, and capital improvement plan with budgets. We ask that any citizens wishing to speak, state your name, address, and record, name and address for the record. I apologize. We also ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Well, all right, and if you want to leave, you can leave, but we would love to have you stay and make public comment about the budget. We thought we'd try. Congratulations.
I wondered where you were going with that.
I know. I asked Debbie, I was like, should we try it? They're like, goodbye.
Yeah, we might want to hold on for a minute, because I don't think anybody wants to stop.
And this means you can't complain about the ball.
It's like FB press or something.
Can you hear Bob or are you?
It's FB press one. That's the, it's FB press.
It didn't connect yet. I thought we were automatically connected.
The last, last meeting.
Anyone?
Mine comes on.
Did you download it?
No.
I thought I did, but I went into closed session.
I feel like, I feel like a fair stand.
Huh?
Anyone?
Okay, just keep going.
You're connected now.
I think you just have to do it once or twice, and then it will remember it.
It should remember it every time.
Oh, you have a different.
Oh, it's.
Oh, you have to go.
Get your camera.
Oh, we're just filming that. Oh, okay. I thought somehow.
I can't look up all the time.
All right, well, now we really are, if anybody would like to please speak on the budget, opening it up for public comment, now that we've cleared the room. There being no citizens wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing portion of the meeting closed. The next part of our meeting is the hearing of citizens. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board? Consent agenda?
Recommend the approval of the consent agenda, which includes a trip request from James Monroe and the VSBA Business Honor Room.
May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Green, seconded by Mrs. Green. Nope, by Mrs. Ream, right?
Yes.
Yes. All in favor? Any, any discussion? Sounds like a fun trip. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have action items, personnel.
Recommend the board approve the personnel list as presented.
Move to accept the personnel.
Moved by Mrs. Green, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Erin Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holland?
Next, we have approval, adoption of the school division operating budget and special grants budget for the 2015-16, for 2015-16, and the capital improvements plan and budgets for 2016 through 2000, through 2020.
Okay. I recommend the school board approve the 2015-16 school division operating and special grants budget as presented in the amount of $41,177,218 and $4,990,570, along with the capital improvements plan and budgets for 2016 to 2020, and that the budgets be forwarded to city council.
Move to accept.
Second. And this is the, essentially the same budget that we've reviewed.
It's essentially the same, however, we, the amount that we're requesting from the city has decreased by approximately $500,000, because we were able to use our fund balance to pay for some one-time expenditures and pull some big, those larger ticket items out of the budget.
Okay. And we also have a better estimate of what the states want to look like?
Well, we've, you know, for the first time in a long time, we have a state budget before the, well, it was approved before the end of February, which is historic, I think. And we did net a small amount of additional funding from the cit, from the state.
Right. We picked up about $108,000 on the house side of the budget for the teacher pay increase allocation. And then, just recently, the budget was sent out again as the amended version, the crossover version, and so we picked up about $14,000 on that. It still has to go through the governor's veto process, but that, that's where we stand
And just a reminder that we do have a joint work session with city council on March 30th.
Any other discussion?
No, thank you for all of your hard work. I know a lot went into this.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have an instructional presentation on the administrative retreat, Dr. Kay Wyatt. Is it the administrative? It's not the administrative retreat.
It's a master schedule.
It's not. I'm sorry. It is. I have, it's a little typo here. It's, it's all good.
Something much more exciting.
Yay.
All righty.
You all, if we're looking here, we discovered we have new screens, so it's not that we're not looking at you. We now have the presentation.
It's okay, I'm adjusting too.
It's a whole new world.
All right, here we go. Whole new world, but it's a very good to be in right now.
It is.
Well, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce to you the new master schedule for Walker Grant Middle School for 2015-16 school year.
Ours says Tiger Time.
Oh, there it goes. All righty. Well, it's called Tiger Time, and Tiger Time is a new instructional schedule for us. It is to foster student creativity and allow interpersonal time between the student, excuse me, teacher and student. Also, it will work with students to investigate and explore the content material a little bit more. It is a shift in thinking and learning for our students and our staff. We're moving from a 72-minute block of time to a 90-minute core content block of time. We're also going to offer the core content on what we call extension periods, and those will also be an example that I'm going to show you in just a few more minutes. That's going to help you clarify that a little bit better. I think it's working now. Okay, there we go. All right. The extension period is a 43-minute student enrichment or intervention time, where students will have this in addition to their core content time of 90 minutes. The students will attend these extension periods on the opposite day of their scheduled 90-minute core content time. All right, here is a sample student schedule that you have. You also have copies of it in your packet. I want to explain it. A student's schedule is a two-day schedule. It's an A-day schedule and a B-day schedule. Each day, a student will have two core classes, two extension classes, and one elective period every day. If you're looking at the example that I've provided with you, if we look at the A-day, you'll see there are four blocks of time. You'll see a 90-minute block for the core content of English, a 90-minute block for mathematics, and two extension periods, which are each 43 minutes, one for history and one for science, and then the student will have a 90-minute block of an elective. On B-day, you'll see they'll have two extension periods also. It will be an extension of their English and an extension of their mathematics periods. And again, those extension periods are 43 minutes. And block two will have a 90-minute block of history and a 90-minute block of science, and then the second elective of their choice. Some great positives about this new format is that eighth grade Some great positives about this new format is that eighth graders can now take a world language and an elective. It'll be small changes to our pacing guide, and all students can have an elective and intervention or remediation period of instruction. Also, our teachers will have 90 minutes of instructional time. And it will allow for more common planning, which will increase collaboration among staff, as also it will increase the data-driven decision-making from those collaborative times that they will meet together. It will also enable us to have a resource period for students with disabilities, and it'll be a smooth transition to our middle years program or NYV International Bachelor Program for the 2017-2018 school year. This schedule will also prepare students for James Monroe High School, who's already on the block schedule. We do have some challenges that we know we're going to have to face. There'll be some sharing of classroom space, which we've been accustomed to the last couple of years through the architectural study, that we've already put in place, and we're going to continue to make the best use of our instructional space at Walker Grant. We do know that it is also new for all of our stakeholders, our teachers and our students and our parents, so we have some informational sessions for parents and students coming up. Our first one is on March 31st, which is our parent night, and I'll hold two sessions where parents can come in and learn about the new schedule and ask questions. We also do realize there's going to be some adjustment to the instructional time, and teachers were trained in February at our professional development session on student engagement. And also in March, we're going to work with some of the research of John Strube, who does active learning strategies on the block, where teachers will learn to structure their time to make sure that they're getting inductive thinking and content attainment lessons into that new 90-minute block of time. Just like to thank Dr. Mike Reddick. Many of you know him. He's kind of the scheduling brewer around the world. He's worked with many countries and comes to us locally from Virginia here. Also, I'd like to thank John Gordon, James Snyder, the high school, who we've worked closely with for the schedule, Judy Filmit, and also Mike George. We all came together in January to meet with Mike Reddick to go over the schedule, as well as we've met frequently with our instructional leaders in the building and our teachers to prepare and bring this master schedule together for next year. So are there any questions or comments about the schedule? Yes?
Thank you. This is really interesting and, um...
You're, Mike?
Oh, sorry. I think I'm just not close enough to it. This is really interesting stuff. With regard to the A and B days, will the students have the same teacher?
Yes.
So if they're in English for 90 minutes on A-day, then they go to B-day, do they have the same?
They will be assigned the same teacher. We've worked with our technology department on that, so they can be linked. So if the student is struggling in that 90-minute block of time, that teacher has an item analysis to know exactly where she'll need to support that student on that opposite day of the core content class.
Okay.
So they are linked together.
So all of their, they will have four core content teachers?
Teachers.
And they'll all be the same?
Yes.
They'll have to switch?
No, they will not switch.
Okay.
By having that extension, also, it'll allow them to go home and process some of the material and come back that next day and maybe ask questions about a project or homework assignment, which is quite different than a traditional block of time. It allows the teachers to constantly be in touch with their students on a daily basis.
And did you all, in your research, did you go to schools where you saw this in action?
We've gone to schools where we've seen this in action, yes. We've gone down to schools in Richmond, and previously we went to schools in Spotsylvania also.
Okay. So some of the Spotsky Middle Schools use this?
They have, they don't have this exact block schedule. They don't have the extension. Some of them have built-in other types of intervention programs, but this one is very unique and designed just for Walker Grant Middle School.
And you believe it will also allow time for intervention as well as enrichment?
Enrichment.
All right. Thank you.
Is, is there movement built into some of these 90-minute blocks?
Yes. That's what the active, active learning strategies are, where, and actually, I did bring an example. If you're blocking that 90-minute timeframe, you do homework for about 10 to 15 minutes, you do inductive thinking and concept attainment lessons for about 20 to 25 minutes, and then there's an activity or simulation of about 30 to 35 minutes, guided practice of about 10 to 15 minutes, reteaching of a skill of about 10 to 15 minutes, and then that last five to 10 minutes is closure. It's very important for our teachers to be trained that we're making the best use of this time. You can't do and sit and get. They have to be active, and it has to be a variety of materials for these students.
Okay.
And you do already have several teachers at Walker Grant who employ some fun strategies that actually have their kids standing up, getting out of their desk, doing certain movements or playing, playing games with, because you, we already have, how long is it now?
72 minutes.
72 minutes, which is long for middle schoolers as well. So you do have some folks I know that employ those strategies now.
Yes, and he will be sharing some of those. He's a big cheerleader of this.
Right. Okay. Good. Okay.
Have you already started to make some of those smaller changes to your pacing guide?
They are working on it. They've been talking about it. A department leads have met probably more times than they care to, to talk about, to talk about what needs to be changed. Really, it's just adjusting how you're going to flip on the A and B day and making sure you meet the students' needs during the extension time, whether it's through enrichment or intervention. So that way, the children, we always focus on the intervention piece. We really need to also put focus on the enrichment part of the curriculum.
How's, what's the, the mood with, with your teachers? Excited, anxious?
Initially, they were anxious, and the more we talk about it and the more we spend time kind of combing through it, they are excited. With, you know, anything new, there's a little hesitation in the beginning, but I think we've spent enough time discussing it and getting feedback from them for their concerns, and we've done some tweaking to it based on their feedback, so I think we're going to be in a good place next year.
I saw some hard copies of the presentation going around. Can we get those too?
Yes, they're on your.
I didn't, I didn't, I don't, I don't have one. Thank you. I looked. Thanks. All right.
Great, great.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Baker?
Good evening. Before you've got the January 31st operating fund analysis for the financial report, and the first thing you'll notice, we have very tight variances. That reflects that expenses or revenues are running very close to what we budgeted. I will say that during the budget session in Richmond, there's a caboose bill that always impacts the current year funding in any biennial. And this caboose bill, it adjusts the average daily membership or ADM numbers, as well as some specific funding items. After everything that was done in Richmond this, this past session on the caboose bill, we had a very slight decrease in projected state fundings, but it, it should not impact us in any way for, for the cruise down into the, into the year. Are there any specific questions I can address on this month's financial report?
Do you have any concerns?
Yes.
No, I don't. I was concerned about the cold weather for a while, but I think, I think we're going to see our way through that. I'm sure that impacted. We'll, we'll see that in about a month, maybe closer to two weeks to a month on our heating bills. We'll see that impact.
Okay.
No other questions? I'll just let it go at that. Thank you.
All right. And you're back on for tuition rates.
Okay. Next item, every year we come to you with a proposed tuition rate change or to tell you that we'd like to leave it the same, in light of the fact of some of the additional programs we're going to get into in the next couple of years. And because of increased costs, we are suggesting that we have an increase in the out-of-district tuition rate. I'll remind the board that we're one of the very limited number of districts that even allow an out-of-district tuition admittance. And these rates are definitely not exorbitant in comparison to what the cost of an education is for each child. So this coming school year for FY 15-16, we're suggesting that the tuition rate be $42.50, $4,250 for each of the first two children, and then $21.25 for each additional child. And also on the city, city employee tuition rates, you'll see very minimum increase as far as absolute dollar amounts. If you have any detailed questions or comments?
We asked earlier, but, you know, you, you answered some of that, that this also reflects with some of the new programming that we have coming up and that that's costing money and, and that we haven't had an increase in a long time.
No, we've done as much as possible to hold that down during some of the economic hard times we've had in the last few years.
And, and the other thing, you know, with personnel cost up like they've been, textbooks costing $175 to $200 apiece, we, we see costs continually rising. And as you saw from our facility study, when Mr. Westmoreland was here, we're pretty much bursting at the seams as well. So, you know, it could require, more tuition students we have, the more teachers we're required to hire, and that is not, not easy to put in the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
School calendar, Mr. Russ?
So summarize, this is the calendar for the 2015-2016 school year is almost identical to the calendar we have this year. Instead of starting on the second, we're starting on the eighth. So if you move it over a week, down a week, over one day, it's almost the identical calendar. All of our holiday breaks are the exact same week.
So we have the day before Thanksgiving off, two weeks at Christmas.
Three, Thanksgiving, two for winter break, and a week of...
I have one question, and I think we did the same thing this year. In February of 2016, we have a teacher work day in the middle of the week on a Wednesday instead of a Monday or a Friday.
On the third, you're speaking of?
Yes. February the third.
That's the day after the end of the nine weeks. That's why we put it there.
Right. Well, and that's what I realized, but I guess you all thought it was, if you moved it two days, it would shortchange the teaching time too much?
No. Well, if we said that, it would lengthen the third quarter, the, the second quarter, and shorten the third.
Right. Well, I think it's just something you might want to consider in future. It's not a makeup.
That, that's easy enough to change, but what, I think what the calendar committee was trying to do, and it's very difficult for them to do, is divide each nine weeks into 45 days.
Right.
And second semester, it's a little more important than it is the first semester because of the benchmark testing and the SOL. They're trying to make it as even as possible.
Right.
So, and also, you have to realize in the second semester, that's when we lose a lot of days because of inclement weather.
Because of what?
What we saw this morning. I'm supposed to see Thursday and...
We could definitely keep it a month.
Yeah, that would be my only thing. It's just, you know, I think it allows families a little more time together or to, to plan an enriching event as opposed to a day in the middle of the week.
No. Thank you. All right. Dr. Gordon, policy time.
Good evening, Dr. Melton, Madam Chairperson Holmes, school board members of our, yes. Session J students is one of the longer sessions as Mr. Thomas explains to you all instructions as well as the rest of the personnel. This section, as we know, covers additionally everything related to students, and it will be my job tonight to provide you with a brief summary and highlights of a few things I thought might be of greater importance to you. Once again, this section contains everything related to students, including discrimination, attendance regulations, the standards of student conduct, sportsmanship, school safety, including weapons, diseases, and child abuse. This section also includes details on student fees, records, and publications. Must always state this, which is a notice that we have on all of our documentation, our city school websites and all school websites, that FCPS is an equal education opportunities school division regardless of sex, color, origin, gender, religion, or marital or parental status. That can be found in section JB. Compulsory attendance for ages five through 18, for any adult that has a child in their custody, that can be found in sections JEA, which partners with compulsory attendance that also includes the placement of children in our alternative education programs. If you all remember, approximately three to four years ago, we actually revised the Fredericksburg City Public Schools attendance policy, which had a direct relation to us having one of the highest, if not the highest overall division attendance in the state, where we have consistently been above the state average. It's mandatory that all students come to school at least 95% of the time, and Fredericksburg has averaged 97% of the time since we've instituted that new policy. Also, four years ago, while I was the principal of James Monroe High School, we also revamped our alternative education programs, basically with the almost three strikes that you're out policy, where we now have divisions depending on student discipline, academic or behavioral issues, that now include first offenses mainly being placed in the RAS program, and of course, more serious instances being placed in the regional program. Try to make sure that we give students the opportunity to kind of redeem themselves before we actually allow them back into our regular secondary schools of Walker Grant and James Monroe. Students who live in Fredericksburg must also show proof of residency or pay the tuition rates that Mr. Baker discussed with $4,250. Proof of residency also includes a current utility bill, a current lease or mortgage with parent guardian's names. This can be found in regulation JEC dash R. Our school council is doing a tremendous job of making sure that students do show that proof of residency, and after a amount of time, we make sure at the school level that there's going to be constant communication with the parents, phone calls, letters, et cetera, before they mainly get the ultimatum letter that usually comes from Mr. Baker stating that if you do not pay this amount, you will be withdrawn from Fredericksburg City Public Schools by X date. And that usually is a great motivator to get that information in. Attendance policy details the total number of days a student can miss. Also clarifies the definition of excused absences versus unexcused absences, as well as make-up procedures, including Wednesday and Saturday school. We created Wednesday school about a year after our original attendance policy to provide more opportunities for our students to make up any missed instructional time. This also provides greater leeway for some of our students and their families that may take a vacation. And one of the things that Dr. Melton and I discussed was creating an alternate assignment for those students, and once that comes into any of our schools, Hugh Mercer, Lafayette, James Monroe, or Walker Grant, that is then reviewed by the administration and then placed in the student's attendance file. That student does not receive an admin excuse absence until it's actually received, and we keep it in there in case there's an attendance appeal later on at the end of the year. Things that are always very, very important to students themselves and that we send home for our parents at the beginning of every year is the standards of student conduct. This includes student dress, truancy, disruptive conduct, improper language, hot topics such as bullying, assault and battery, new hot topic from VSBA this year, electronic cigarettes, theft, and bus offenses, just to name a few. This can be found in regulation JFC dash R. Sportsmanship regulations include guidelines for participants, coaches, and fans. This includes first injection equalling two missed games and second injection, uh, equalling missing four games. A third ejection equals dismissal from the team. As you all know, when I was chairman of the Virginia High School League, we wanted to make sure that James Monroe High School was a model of sportsmanship for all of the high schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we felt it was going to be our goal to have a, a policy, as Dr. Melton would say, that has some teeth, to make sure that our student athletes, as well as our coaches, understand we're going to carry ourselves in a professional manner, in a sportsmanship manner, and then we will be humble in victory as well as being humble in defeat. We've had a few sportsmanship incidents or issues since we instituted this policy, and we would think one of the main things is very clear, is we have the sportsmanship banner of James Monroe High School, at Walker Grant Middle School, as well as James Monroe, at all of our athletic contests and events. The public address announcer also announces the importance of sportsmanship for everyone that's in attendance, and we've been very, very lucky and benefited to have such a great school community that's done a great job of following that. Drugs in school is not tolerated. I must say that because that seems to be one of the issues that sometimes lands our students in alternative school. This also includes imitation drugs. Students will have discipline hearings and may or may not be expelled or placed in an alternative setting. This is found in, in regulation and, and policy JFCF. Currently, Mr. Robert Birch still serves as our discipline officer with myself sitting in. We have our administrative assistant principals that rotate throughout each and every month that make sure that we have these meetings, which usually will take place on the second or third Thursday every month. We're hoping that at the beginning of the year, that we do not have any more discipline hearings, but we're going to keep our fingers crossed on that. School officials may search a student belongings, lockers, or automobiles. This also includes school-sponsored events. This can be found in policy JFG. As you notice, when you drive onto any of our school parking lots, there is a sign that says, "Any vehicles and/or person may be subjected to search." And one of the things that we've had to make very clear to some of our students, especially at the secondary level, this includes your locker. And one of the things that both schools have in place is that students cannot share lockers just to make sure that no one can say, "Well, that's not mine." If it's listed to you and it's in your locker, it is yours. And we also must make sure that we always have the Fredericksburg City Police Department is going to be involved in our searches when it comes to any potential illegal activities. The Code of Virginia requires teachers or any other persons employed in the public schools to report suspected child abuse and neglect, that is found in policy JHG. When I met the lead administrators, the principals of each one of the buildings in August, we wanted to make sure that we had the child abuse policy was going to be present in visible places throughout each building. The mailroom, as we all know, is one place to be, the teachers will frequent each and every day, as they go to their mailbox, sometimes they come to the office to check with the administrators and so forth. On any suspected issues of child abuse that we do have, and strong conversations I had with Ms. Pamela Steinke, we have discovered that it's the best that the teachers are always going to be the first line of defense. However, we want to make sure that they actually have conversations with the school counselors and the administrators, so that when we do report these issues or incidents, it's more of a team approach. This also gives the building-level administrators an opportunity to document these things before they are turned over to such legal reporting agencies such as social services. Also, the Code of Virginia states that any licensed educator has reason to believe that if a student is suicidal, they shall contact at least one parent to determine mental history and if counseling is necessary or prior counseling has occurred. Once again, this kind of piggybacks on the previous discussion I just gave you about child abuse and neglect. We believe that the team approach that we have in dealing with any students that have threats to themselves, threats to the building, et cetera, is the best way. We always feel that communication with not only our individual staff members, where our school counselors are probably the most trained people in the buildings, but also to include our school psychologists, to also include the parents, unless, of course, the parent is actually the subject of some of the issues that the children may have, then we may have to bring in some other outside agencies. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, that is the small, quick overview. Feel free to read the 104 pages of Section A at your earliest convenience in case you have a nice snow day that you want to sit around to do so. At this time, I will open up to any questions that you may have.
As a member of the discipline committee, we appreciate all that you do to support every item in this category, thank you.
I also want to just add, thank you for that. As you all know, or you may not know, we are pursuing the VSBA Board of Distinction designation, and we are required to review this manual, have some process in place where we review this manual to earn this award. The format that we choose is, each board gets to choose how they review it. And I just want to say, Dr. Milton suggested we use this format, and I think it's been really helpful, not only to us, but to have the policies reviewed so that the public gets an idea of what is in those policies. And so, thank you for the work, all of you for the work that you do, and I really understand why it's a requirement for boards. I think that many boards don't even go through, I won't generalize, but you know how thick that document is.
Yes, sir.
And to have us review this.
It's exciting reading, too.
Yeah, very much so. But this is a good process, and hopefully, even if we don't continue to pursue that distinction, we'll continue to have some process whereby we keep up with what's in the manual.
I didn't think we had a choice about pursuing that.
I didn't know so either.
You made that clear. But no, it is, it is really good, and I think it's helpful to you all, and you just can't believe how many policies there are, and so I think that's a good eye-opener to the public as well, that we have a policy for just about everything. Things that you wouldn't even think of. I do have a question related to this section on the child abuse and neglect, so you all are encouraging, I mean, teachers really are the first line of defense there, and it's so important. So you all are, I like it that you're encouraging that group approach. Do any of your in-services ever talk about how to recognize those signs? I think most veteran teachers probably know, but maybe for new teachers, that might be an idea.
Several of the schools, and I'm not sure exactly how many, but I know social services is more than willing to come and talk to them, so I know several of the schools have had them come out in the beginning of the year.
Okay, all right, terrific, thank you.
And I see nods in the back from the principals that that's happening.
I had the same questions about the suicide prevention. I've voiced before that this is not my favorite policy, not because I do believe that we all need to be aware of, that we all need to be a part of suicide prevention. I don't like the fact that this is based on a law that basically says that teachers need to be, I feel like it's saying that teachers need to be able to identify if a student is of imminent risk, and being a mental health professional, I know that that takes training. And so, I don't like that we're, that we're putting that on teachers without a lot of training. So, Ms. Steinke, please talk to me, make me feel better about that.
We have a suicide risk assessment procedure.
Okay.
In effect, and teachers know to refer to guidance, and guidance is very aware of this, they help create it. And there's a whole flow sheet, forms, what you need to do, and of course, calling the parent is the first thing unless it's an abuse case. But that's, and I have a copy of it with me, I brought for you.
Thank you.
And I can make copies for anyone. But it's very specific, like if this happens, do this, if this happens, do that. So it's very prescriptive, the psychologists were involved with it, it comes out of a lot, I think UVA had a big program with it, and there was another group that did it, but it was several books that we looked at to develop what we thought would best fit us and our kids.
Okay, and so the teachers have something that tells them, these are the signs to look for, or these are the things that students may or may not say?
In their crisis manual, there's a whole description of signs for adolescents.
The bulk of that, though, falls on our counselors.
Right.
Because as you state, Ms. Holmes, in a 20-minute in-service, you can't train someone to be able to determine whether a child has mental illness or is suffering from family stress or dysfunction or anything like that. A policy, and most of your policies are nothing more than verbatim statements drawn from the Virginia Code, and this particular policy comes in 22.1272.1. And it's verbatim, because I went back and checked it today. So, and it doesn't even mention teachers, it just says, "licensed administrative or instructional personnel." So it's a vague policy, and I think anything else that we do is on us, we're not required to provide any kind of training to anyone under the policy or the state regs, and I think we do go above and beyond that.
Okay. That made me feel a little better, thank you.
Until next year, right?
Well, right, until next year, sure, when I read it again, and it bothers me again. I did have, I didn't see Wednesday school specifically in any of our policies, they did reference Saturday school, and I just didn't know if we just hadn't added that or if we wanted to change the language so that it would say something that would encompass both Wednesday and Saturday school.
Yeah, I believe it's actually in there, we did add it the following year, the first year we only had Saturday school.
All right, I'll look again.
But I do know it's in each individual school's attendance policy, I know that part for a fact, but we can review.
Okay, it might be in that, and, okay. And then, the policy JHCF-R, it talked about a student wellness, school health council, is that our SHAB?
Yes.
Is that what we're doing? Okay. And then I did have another question, you know, I like the policies. In the JFCA, it was teacher removal of students from class. I had some questions about this because I didn't fully understand if this meant removing them from class for ACC, for ISS, because it talks about this, there's a whole protocol that somebody has to have already, that a teacher has to have already gone through, where a parent's been notified twice, and they've gone through all of these things before a student can be removed from class. And so I didn't fully understand what this was referencing.
Well.
It's referencing discipline in the classroom.
Well, right.
And this was a hot topic, some of the board members may remember, it's been years ago, that this was legislation that was proposed and that passed, and it was toned down a little bit by the Virginia School Boards Association, the Virginia Association of School Superintendents. But it deals, the protocols are in place so that often there are personality conflicts, believe it or not, and sometimes those personality conflicts, we don't want an adult just removing a child because of a personality conflict. So that's why those things are in place. The teacher cannot dictate the disciplinary action that's taken, they can just remove them from class.
That part was clear, I just wasn't sure if they had to follow all of the, all of the procedures to get them out of the class, like the first time, if a child throws a chair across the room, I would think that they would be removed immediately, and it would supersede, how has their parent been notified twice and all of that?
Well, some of that's going to be based on the actual, we'll say in this case, disability of the student, student's history behavioral-wise. Some of that also depends on misleadings in SHAB, and working for Special Education Courtney has done a great job of making sure that all teachers that are dealing with some kids that may have some emotional issues have been certified in MATT training. So removal of the class can also be, in case there has to be any type of physical removal from the class, if it's going to be a discipline issue, where our philosophy has always been that one single student should not have the ability to stop or hinder the learning process of everybody else in the class, these are going to be the steps that we're going to take. And so, the contacting the parent could be a teacher contacting the parent the day before when they see the negative behavior. It could be a warning that's given by administration before we get to the point where we're actually removing you from the instructional environment. So that's always going to be our last option, but we just want to try to make sure that we have some failsafes in place before that happens.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Ah, you know, I'll have some later, it's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we have old business. We have a work session with city council on March 30th at 5:30 here. Well, in this building.
It's at City Hall, yeah.
In this building.
Upstairs.
Upstairs. We're looking forward to it. All right, good. And then we have the VSBA Northeastern Regional Forum, April 20th at, where is it, Jarvis? Is it Spotsy?
Spotsy, yeah, things will be at their.
Central office.
Central office, yeah.
Where is that?
Down Massaponics, across from Massaponics High School, down Route 1.
Do you know what time?
It's usually like 5:30.
That's what I was, 5:00 or 5:10.
Okay. And our next regular school board meeting is April 13th at 6:30 at James Monroe. All right, new business. The date for the July school board meeting is July 13th.
Second Monday of the month.
Okay, so that means it'll be here, I mean, at James Monroe, that's what I meant.
And so will April break.
April and May.
Oh, wow. Wow, they got all this new technology, and then we won't be here. VSBA School Law Conference, June 5th, and VSBA Hot Topic Conference, April 15th, in Charlottesville, School Design and Construction, What You Need to Know. All right, and we're up to Good of the Order.
I need to remind you that you need to respond to the Tri-City Soil and Water Conservation Breakfast.
I just got it, yeah.
Honorable.
Yes. The chair has to go to that.
Really? Okay, yeah. I would also like to take this opportunity to say this is Social Work Awareness Month, and so I would like to thank our social workers, those who are officially social workers in our school division, and those who have been social workers and now have other positions in our school division, so go social workers.
May I add, may I add something?
I would love for you to.
Monday, March 9th at 3 o'clock, there will be a bus in front of James Monroe High School, we're going to take as many people as we can to the Virginia Tech Center in Richmond to see Harry Thomas defend his dissertation.
Can we wear T-shirts?
And if all, if, yeah, if all goes well, Mr. Thomas will become Dr. Thomas on the afternoon of March 9th, so we want to wish him luck.
No pressure and good luck. No.
In that case, don't forget to spring forward. Set your clocks up so you'll be on time. March 8th, set your clocks up.
Oh, wow. All right, anything else for Good of the Order?
Does that give you more respect for March? For March, does that, does that, will it help you some?
May I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. Green, Mrs. Green, seconded by Mrs. Miller Richards. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.